Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting. Today is January 22nd, oddly a Monday, and it is 1:00. If you are willing and able to stand, we're going to go into our invocation and pledge of allegiance. However, I want to introduce the two. Doug Alexander really doesn't need an introduction, Bishop of the New Church Without Walls, and I'm going to hold you to getting a hug later. And today, leading the pledge will be Aaron Kincaid from United States Marine Corps. Love Marines. We'll be doing, let's see, First Marine Expeditionary Unit Battalion B, First Battalion, 12th Marines, deployed to Desert Storm and Somali humanitarian operation. I've read extensively on that topic. Bless you for your service. All right. So Bishop, you are up first.
Thank you. Can we all bow our heads? First of all, we're thankful today and grateful to be here in the Board of County Commissioners in Inverness and Citrus County. Lord, we ask you a special blessing to be upon Holly, Rebecca, Diana, Jeff, Ruthie, Steve, Denise, Angela, Doug, the staff, in fact, everyone that's in this building that's attending today. We ask you to bless us and to strengthen us. And Father, we ask for special guidance for those that are governing over this meeting today, those that are in attendance. We ask you to continue to bless Citrus County, all of us, God. Lord, and continue to look out for America and also those that are serving all around the board. We ask this blessing to be upon you, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Bishop.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Doug.
Okay. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
This is a regular meeting of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners. It's 22nd day of January 2024. And attendants are Chair Holly Davis, First Vice Chair Rebecca Bayes, Second Vice Chair Diana Finnegan, Commissioners Jeff Kennard and Ruthie Schlebaugh, County Administrator Steve Howard, and County Attorney Denise A. Diamond-Lynn.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Mr. Howard?
We do have a few items. Additional item E1K, its bid's PB 24069 Microsoft Software Licensing Renewal. Additional item G1, Heavy Equipment Operator Staff Request. And if we could please delete item E1C, pull that. AGR 21-023, Consent to Assignment Agreement. The documentation has not been received from the vendor. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Board?
Motion to approve the agenda with the changes.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kennard, a second by Commissioner Bayes. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kennard, a second by Commissioner Bayes. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, is there any board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. C proclamations.
Motion to approve C1, C2, and C3.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, a second by Commissioner Bayes. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, is there any board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, join me.
Those individuals representing Career and Technical Education Month, please come forward.
So just thank you all for allowing us to be here today and giving us a brief moment. Thank all the county commissioners, Mr. Steve Howard. With the coochies, well, first off, I'm Jamin Monbaren, and I'm District Manager here in Crystal River. Company by our general manager, Mr. David Lambert, and manager of member relations, Gary Steele. He may look pretty familiar to y'all, but I have replaced him in Crystal River, and I'm proud to be in this community and working alongside each and every one of y'all. We're very, with the coochies, very proud to announce that we had a record-setting year in returns in the amount of $23.2 million in the form of capital credits. So we're very proud of that. And being here to present this roughly $37,000 check to the Citrus County, we're looking forward to the continued relationship with Citrus County and serving our members and residents of this community. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Now, if those representing Career and Technical Education Month could please come forward.
Whereas February 1st through 29th, 2024, has been designated Career and Technical Education Month by the Association for Career and Technical Education. And whereas career and technical education offers students the opportunity to gain the academic, technical, and employability skills necessary for true career readiness. And whereas students in career and technical education programs participate in authentic, meaningful experiences that improve the quality of their education and increase their engagement and achievement. And whereas career and technical education provides students with career exploration opportunities earlier in their educational experience, which enables them to make informed and beneficial decisions about their academic coursework and pursue established programs of study and career pathways. And whereas leaders from business and industry nationwide report increasing challenges relating to addressing the skills gap and connecting qualified professionals with available careers in critical and growing CTE-related fields, including healthcare, energy, advanced manufacturing, cybersecurity, and information technology. And whereas career and technical education prepares students for these and other fulfilling careers by offering integrated programs of study that link secondary and post-secondary education and lead to the attainment of industry-recognized credentials. And whereas career and technical education programs ensure that employers have access to a qualified and thriving workforce, ensuring America is a strong and competitive economy. Now, therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, urge all citizens to become familiar with services and benefits offered by the career and technical education programs in this community and to support and participate in these programs to enhance their individual skills and productivity. Now, therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, do hereby proclaim February 1st through 29th, 2024, as Career and Technical Education Month in Citrus County, Florida. Would those individuals representing National Certified Registered Nurse Anesthetist Week please come forward? Whereas since 2000, National Certified Registered Nurse Anesthetists CRNA Week has been the annual celebration of the nearly 59,000 practicing nurse anesthetists who provide anesthesia to patients in the U.S. and in the armed service at home and abroad. Whereas CRNAs are advanced-practiced registered nurses providing anesthesia care to patients in the United States for more than 150 years, CRNAs are among the nation's most trusted professionals. And whereas legislation passed by Congress in 1986 made nurse anesthetists and anesthesiologists the first nursing specialty to be accorded direct reimbursement rights by Medicare, CRNAs are the primary anesthesia providers in rural communities and continue to be the primary providers of anesthesia care to U.S. military personnel. And whereas CRNAs practice in every setting in which anesthesia is delivered, from traditional hospital surgical suites and obstetrical delivery rooms to critical access hospitals, CRNAs are qualified to make independent judgments regarding all aspects of anesthesia care based on their education, training, and licensure. And whereas CRNAs are trusted anesthesia experts caring for patient safety and passionately delivering specialized, cost-effective care to all patients, from newborns to seniors for every type of procedure in all types of facilities. And whereas CRNAs' experience in critical care nursing, in addition to anesthesia care, provides the training and education to address unique healthcare challenges of some of our sickest patients, including veterans. Now, therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, does hereby proclaim the period of January 21st through 27th, 2024, as National Certified Registered Nurse Anesthetist Week in Citrus County, Florida.
Open to the public. Let me just get through the normal. If you would like, anyone would like to address the board, we do have numbered cards now. It's a purple card, sort of a green card. All comments are directed to the chair, and you get three minutes unless you have a letter on file with us, and if so, you need to tell us that you get five. Welcome, Janet.
Good afternoon. Janet Barak, Citrus Springs resident. I noticed that we're going to be talking about CoreCivic, which is a wonderful thing to talk about, and I've got a short comment. The lowest month for them, for people being absent, was June of 2023. That was when there was 58.99% working. That's 40% out. Okay. Now, we're going to be talking about later about charging them money, which they have to pay for fines. And I had a question as to, do those fines go back into the general fund? If so, we should have a decent amount of money in the general fund from them. The second... The second thing I wanted to ask about is, in the agenda, there is a Section F, which is called Outstanding Commissioners Lists. That used to be printed, so everyone could see it. Now, I've noticed in the past few months, well, in the past months or ye-- well, I guess it would be almost a year, you've taken Section F, and you have to go to the backups. I mean, today's Section F, I had to find that it was page 348, 49, 50, and 51 out of 525 backup pages. I don't think there are very many people that are willing to do that.
Test, test.
All right. So when I looked at the outstanding commissioners list, the first one on it has been on the list since December of 2017, and it's not taken care of yet. The next one is December of 2017. It's ongoing. The next one is 2021, April of 2021. To be determined. Okay? There are things on this list ongoing. I got a couple here that say March of 2023, which is nice. Actually got something that's going to be anticipated for completion. But I think people should be aware that there is this list, and this is what you're supposed to be working on. You know, you had your meeting last Thursday to go over what you'd like to accomplish in 2024. Well, 2017 was a couple years ago, and those commissioners had this on the list, and either you're going to work on it, or it shouldn't be on the list. So I'm asking that he, you know, that whoever prints out the agenda puts that Section F in its entirety back on the list so people can see what the board has decided to work on, what you are working on, what's coming up for completion. It's just for being nice to people. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Would anyone else like to address the board? Doug, how many card numbers do we have? Just three? Okay.
Hi, I'm Leanne Bowler from Chris River Little League. I have been working with our county within our county parks and wrecks. All of you are aware of the unfortunate passing of Chandler Stark-Stalkup, I'm sure. We would like to rename our park after him, our baseball complex after him, and I know that it's a lengthy process. I've been working with them since November, and the last report I got was it needed to come to the commissioner. So I had asked if I needed to come, and I didn't get a response. I had sent an email to Ms. Schlebaugh, and she had said that there was an open meeting today, so here I am.
I responded.
Yes, she did. She responded. Thank you very much. I didn't expect a response from her because I did get a message that she was out, so I really appreciate her responding. Chandler had played ball at our league since he was three years old. His dad served as our president for multiple years. I was at another league at that time. In my conversations with the county, I admit, I jumped the gun, I misunderstood something, I ordered a sign. I thought we were moving forward. Then I got, when I sent them the picture of the sign that matched what the size and the specs and the colors, that were not what I picked, but what they said it would have to be if it went through, they were like, whoa, we, it's not approved. So I, I'm just here to see, where do we go from here? What is the next step? And if that, if naming our complex is not available, is there something else we can do? My board voted in our November 6th meeting that this is something we would like to do to honor this upstanding citizen that had an unfortunate experience in our community. I did speak to both his mother and father before I went anywhere to make sure they were okay with us doing something as a league. They were very honored. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, will you explain? We'll answer afterwards.
Yes, I'm sorry. We'll explain after, and don't go anywhere, Eric. Because I'm going to, I want you to let us know what's going on. Hi.
Hi. Amy Penner-Ternando. I contemplated whether it was worth even continuing to address y'all today, but after speaking with a private landowner who's very frustrated, and I will be working with to stop the ATVs overrunning his property, it increased my fight to get this addressed. On December 23rd, I drove down Route 41, and as I looked to the right, I saw ATVs once again driving up the trail, on the trail. As I looked to the left, I noticed vehicles parked on what I know is private property. I contacted FWC and the sheriff's office to advise some of these facts. Three hours later, when heading home, I saw the vehicles still parked there. I contacted the landowner, and after speaking with him, he's agreed to me helping him stop the trespassing. Something needs to be done to address this issue. In a past meeting, one of the commissioners stated that he had a problem, and he called the sheriff that addressed the problem with ATVs in his neighborhood. When I call the sheriff now, after complaining, I'm lucky if they even show up. I would like something done with this issue before there are any more accidents, anyone's hurt, or even worse, killed. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Head, would you like to come up? I think naming the field after Mr. Stalkup is a beautiful idea, but we'll get, and then I'll open it up to the board once he tells us where we are.
Just a quick update. I was made aware of that about a month ago, and we were looking to make sure that we're following a standard practice across the board for all the parks, so I can absolutely get with Ms. Bowler and follow up with her directly and see if we can't get that unstuck and see where we are.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
The only thing I would like to know, Eric, is, if I may, Mr. Howard, you know, Chandler was murdered, and this is tragic, and I hate for government to move as slow as they do and then to open that scab a year, two years from now. That's, that's the only concern I have, to be sensitive to this family.
I understand.
Thank you.
We'll have something back before you very soon.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, moving right along.
I would like to just comment on Ms. Amy's comments. FWC is the agency that oversees the trails. We can't tell them what to do. I mean, we don't have any jurisdiction over them, just like we have no jurisdiction of the sheriff's office. I hear your frustrations. I will reach out to my contacts at FWC once again. I know it's got to be frustrating, but please understand that the Board of County Commissioners has, we have no oversight or input to these two agencies. So I, but I will reach out to FWC once again.
And to address Janet's concerns about, what is it, F? First of all, your points are well-taken. We are actually moving, and I can't speak for what staff is going to do here, but we have Achieve It software that's going to go live on the website that shows a lot of those projects and what the progress bars and everything else will be. So theoretically, this can just go away, possibly. Yes, Mr. Howard?
I think, I think it could. But we'll, based on the direction of the board, I think there's some conflicts with the strategic plan and also some of these things. One of the items which was brought up was the landfill, which was from 2017, and it's, it's complex. That issue's been going on for a long time, and it has to do with additional property and things like that. So we are making progress as quickly and as efficiently as we can. Some of these unfortunately take time, and it looks like that process was started in 2017, but we hope to get it solved in 2024, lots of these items.
And for any of you who are, like to navigate our agenda most easily, if you go to the upper-left corner where it says Meeting Overview, all of those are hot links. So I literally got to the exact page in one second, as soon as I navigated to F, so that's an easier way to access any of the backup that you need. Okay, we have five minutes until our time's certain, so we can actually move on to E, if the board doesn't have anything else to say.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Move to approve E1A through E1J in its entirety.
There's no C.
True.
The E1K was added, and C was pulled.
So E1ABDEFGHI, correct?
J.
And J. Okay. Second, my motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Schlebaugh, a second by Commissioner Bayes. Is there any public comment? Is there any board discussion?
Chair, I didn't hear K added. Was K on there because that was the added item?
Ah, yes, thank you.
And K, thank you, that's what I, he was too fast for me.
The thing that was big and red on here, yes.
He was too fast.
Okay, so you're going to amend it to add K.
If I can speak, I'll go slower.
You amend that?
And I'll amend my second.
Thank you.
All right. Any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. E2.
Motion to approve E2.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, a second by Commissioner Bayes. Is there any public comment? Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Madam Chairman, motion to approve E3.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Schlebaugh, a second by Commissioner Bayes. Is there any public comment?
Janet Barak, Citrus Springs. It's 24 months of accounting that shows that they've been deficient. That's between $30,000 and $31,000 per month, minus February, which is $28,000, that we've been collecting. I really think it's time that the board and the administration look into seeing what other companies are out there that would be willing to take over the management and running of our county jail, and at what cost. I know we have a contract with CoreCivic that doesn't come up till the summertime, because I'm here when you sign the contracts and stuff, and I'm sure, you know, Commissioner Kennard knows the same thing. They come up in the summer, and the one will be coming up again for CoreCivic. I don't know if it's this year or next year, but it'll be coming up. But they're not meeting their contract. I agree with charging them $31,000 minimum. And, you know, we need to do the next thing, which is see who else is out there that would love to run our facility. I'm sure that CoreCivic makes billions. They run facilities all over the United States. I'm sure there are other corporations out there that run facilities for counties. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Anyone else? Any board discussion?
I would like the administrator to address that.
Well, I think, you know, we're, obviously, we're looking at an addendum coming forward, which we're hopeful that's going to potentially be on the next board meeting with this contract monitor, which I think is a positive. I think there are discussions, you know, we continuously look at providers. We haven't got to that point yet. Obviously, that's a whole different process of, you know, if you're looking at your contract and things like that. So we are looking at some of those items. But again, much like a lot of these issues, they're complex, it's not a decision you can make quickly. So there's a long history with CoreCivic in this county, but we are looking at all those issues that were raised to make sure that we're doing this in the right way.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
It is a 10-year contract?
It is, correct.
And we're two, three years into it?
I'd have to look, I don't have in front of me, but...
Approximately.
I would think, at least, yeah.
Sounds, sounds about right. And as far as Janet's comments about the fees, they don't go back into general fund. It's, it's not like money we're getting back, it's a reduction off of what we would owe them, correct?
Correct.
Janet, I hope that helps clear up some of that.
Keep talking for another 30 seconds, we can go to our...
And they were the only bidder. When it went out to contract, they were the only bidder. How's that?
Yep. Nailed it. All right. Presentations, public, nope. Oh, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I got so excited there. H1. H1.
Yeah, I don't know, Mr. and Mrs. Klyat, are they here?
Okay, y'all are welcome to come up and speak if you'd like. They're good, okay. This is an application for a plat vacation, this is request to vacate the seven-and-a-half-foot platted easements lying on Lot 9 and 8 of Crystal Manor, Unit Number 1, Block 5. And this is showing the easements, they're on every lot, it is a blanket easement throughout the plat. And they're trying to do this to address a carport and a slab that were put on the easements. So here's a picture of the carport and the slab, utilities have no, no concerns, there are no utility lines running in this area. Staff, state and environmental health staff have reviewed this and recommend approval of the application.
Thank you.
And the applicants are here for questions.
Board?
Madam Chair.
Yes. Commissioner Bays.
Move approval.
I think you need to read it off.
Oh, all right. Move approval of PV-2023-00004. Second.
And that's A, A and B?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Bays, a second by Commissioner Schlebaugh. Is there any public comment?
Through this thing, and they still have an open code compliance case? Hopefully, the county's gonna go after that for building without permission. I, I agree, give them the, you know, variance because they own both lots, but are they gonna marry the two lots and make it one, like the county had, had suggested years ago when we started building, it was supposed to be a house on a lot, not a shed, and they've got a big, huge building, 1,800-square-foot building on a lot that's next to them, and then they put this slab in between, and they still have an open code compliance case. So hopefully, is the county gonna continue to go after the open code compliance? Give them their, you know, right away, because no, the county's not gonna put anything there. But I, I do have that question.
Thank you, Janet. Ms. Kattu?
They did have a hearing with the special master, they were given, that was in November, they were given 90 days to comply. They have a pending building permit for this, so if this vacate gets approved, they can then get their building permit and be in line.
Will they have to do a lot unification?
They have a unity of title application as part of their building permit.
Okay, super. Thank you.
And, Madam Chairman.
Yes.
You're saying, are you saying you're marrying the two lots?
I, I don't use that term, but they're using a unity of title, a title that will allow accessories with the, with the house.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
All good questions, Janet, and they've all been answered. Excellent.
Not everybody understands unity of title for the two lots, so I just want to
Marrying's not a planning term, but I understand, yes. You know me, I'm gonna, not gonna use slang.
No, seeing no other public comment, then any board discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right. Were we done with these? We were, so we're on to F.
Just one, just one update, actually, we got good news from the Florida Department of Transportation, they anticipate advertising the design contract by the end, end of January for Number 3, the Halls River Road Multi-Purpose Path.
Okay.
That's all I have for updates.
Commissioners, anything? All right, carry on, Steve, you're up next.
Number G, we're seeking approval to approve the addition of one heavy equipment operator position for the Solid Waste Management Division. Also, Number B, to approve the related budget transfer, and again, this is enterprise fund, non-general fund.
Okay. Board?
Motion to approve.
G1, A and B?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Finnegan, a second by Commissioner Bays. Is there any public comment? Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 4-0, get Commissioner Kennard when he comes back.
Chair.
Yes.
Chair, I believe Commissioner Kennard has left.
Oh, left, left.
He's not feeling well.
His bag is still there, and that is
We'll, we'll take care of that for him. He's not feeling well.
Okay, thank you. Passes 4-0. All right. Moving on to the Is.
Madam Chairman, move to approve I1.
Second.
A and B.
Okay.
Is that right? I'm sorry. Just ignore me. I am moved to approve I1.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Schlebaugh, a second by Commissioner Bays. Is there any public comment?
Advisory Council, the MSBU. Those bylaws had, do they have to go out to all the citizens to be approved for changes in the bylaws? Like they do in Citrus Springs? Because I, and some of the typographical, there were typographicals that you may wanna go back through, and I'm not gonna point them out at this point in time, because
Denise.
More than five.
Is that you?
Okay, but, but, but the thing is
No, ma'am.
But the thing is, they don't have to go back out to the people that approved the MSBU to begin with, because the MSBU had to be approved by all of the residents that owned or lived in Beverly Hills when they first started, just like Citrus Springs. Our MSBU's are, are approved, you know, were approved by the populace. So that's what my biggest question was, can you go around changing bylaws for advisory council without approval of the entire membership?
Carl, do you wanna respond to that?
Carlton Hall, Assistant Public Works Director, Sisters County. I, I would have to look back and see, but I don't believe the bylaws would have to be sent out to all the citizens. They're making some minor changes in there about who could speak, at what outings, and different meetings that they go to, and a few other changes that were made there.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
I'd like to hear from the county attorney.
Hello. I think Ms. Barak is used to dealing with homeowners' associations and organizational documents and governing documents that are controlled by Chapter 720. However, in this case, we're talking about MSBU, and if you look at Article 10, the bylaws and any amendments thereto shall be approved by 2/3 of the members present, and shall be further approved by the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners. So basically, within the document, it has an amendment provision, so it's to be amended by the members of the MSBU Board and the Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you, Madam Attorney.
Thank you. I was gonna say, if, Janet, if you were the only one to catch that and it got through staff, we're in trouble. So I, I was glad to see Article 10, thank you.
All right, any further board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 4-0.
Madam Chairman.
Oh, sorry. Madam Chair, if Ms. Barak has, wants to tell us where those typos are, we would greatly appreciate it.
Okay. Commissioner Schlebaugh.
Madam Chairman, on Item I2, my district, Beverly Hills Advisory Council, I'd like to nominate and Constance Martin Carter and Eileen Coats for the two individual positions on the advisory board.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion by Commissioner Schlebaugh, second by Commissioner Bays. Is there any public comment? Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 4-0.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
I3, also my district, we need to nominate and appoint three individuals to the Citrus Springs Advisory Council. I would like to nominate Joan Diaz, Thomas Mize, and Wayne Nagel.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Schlebaugh, second by Commissioner Bays. Is there any public comment? Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 4-0.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Guess I'll keep going. The I4, the Historical Resource Board, they need to nominate, they're bringing the board, the band back together, nominate five regular members and two alternate members. I would like to nominate Paul Granin as a regular member, Candace Bellamy McPherson as a regular member, Walter Bud Osborne as a regular member, Judy DeBacco as a regular member, and Catherine Kathy Turner Thompson as a regular member. And the alternates would be Melissa Bower-Master and Lynn Turek.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Schlebaugh, anybody want a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bays. Is there any public comment? Is there any board discussion?
I'm just excited to see Kathy Turner Thompson joining this board, as you know, she ran the historical courthouse for 100 years, and I'm just so
She takes offense at that remark.
She is so young, but she ran, she ran it like a woman that ran it for 100 years, and just so glad to see her putting her hat in there.
Outstanding.
Naming the hat.
I'm, I was excited to see her on there as well. No other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 4-0.
Madam Chairman, I5, the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, they're looking for four positions for membership, and terms for two years, I would like to nominate Kathy Anderson Moore, Melissa Walker, Barbara Wheeler, and Anne Marie Anzalone Briarcheck.
Outstanding.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Schlebaugh, second by Commissioner Bays, is there any public comment? Any board discussion? I will say that I've gotten to know Anne Marie very, you know, pretty well, and she's fabulous. I worked with her on a few things, and I'm really glad to see her join this board. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 4-0. All right, committee reports.
Nothing for me.
Nothing for me.
Commissioner Finnegan?
Oh, sorry, no, nothing.
I'm looking to see if I had any committee, I don't believe I had either. Oh, I had TDC, so that was easy to forget, because it was 9:00 AM the morning after the Pine Ridge hearing, so anyway. The only thing of substance from that board meeting will be coming to us for a vote, so I'll just leave it there. Commissioner Schlebaugh?
Nothing.
Kennard. So I'll present this for him, I guess we have, there's a conflict. I think it's Kennard that has the conflict, yes?
Yes, that's what he's indicated.
I also have a conflict.
She has one as well.
Do we, do we know when Commissioner Kennard is available?
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
I was gonna propose that in the month of August, which happens, it has happened historically, that we have one meeting in the month of August. Because I can't make this meeting or the week, that week, and I don't believe either can Commissioner Kennard.
How's our schedule, can we afford to skip a meeting?
I don't know that far in advance, maybe I'm without, you know, talking with staff, but I'm sure we, we'll look, we can look at it, and if you wanna, you know, go with this for now, we'll, we can
Why don't we table this till the next meeting, this can wait till February, right?
Sure.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Since we're looking at this, I would, there's an obligation that I would like to help out with, if we're only doing one meeting, or even if we did the two meetings and it just got bumped to the 6th and the 20th. If we're looking at a meeting, maybe we could make it not the 13th, or not that week. So the 6th or the 20th, or both, if we end up with two meetings.
Okay, we'll, we'll pull into everybody's input.
Madam Chairman, I, I had the same thoughts, but the 20th, I believe, is election day, that's
Yes, primary.
Why I was proposing one meeting. But we can talk about it later, if you'd like.
We will gather all your input and feedback, and we'll, we can bring it back.
Okay. So we'll okay, so do we need a motion to table that? Madam Attorney, or just skip it?
You can just move it on to the next meeting.
Thought so, okay. Commissioner Finnegan? Commissioner Bays?
Nothing today, thank you.
Okay. We actually don't have IV4 people here, residents here, but I did I did, I did ask staff, because unfortunately, more and more people continue to get taken in by this, and so we have new people showing up that need an explanation from the beginning, so I asked staff through Mr. Howard to put together an FAQs list, frequently asked questions, to go along with the Ashley Moody letter, and then just provide that to everyone, the commissioners, the staff, and then that's our answer, because we need to make sure that all of this is organized information, that we're all singing off the same hymnal. Ms. Lynn?
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay, open to the public. You're tapping out. All right. No one wants to speak, all right. Seeing none, commissioners, do you have anything else? All right, we have we're gonna recess for the 5 o'clock, but our upcoming meetings are February 6, here at 1:00 PM, February 20, here at 1:00 PM, March 12, here at 1:00 PM. We have no upcoming workshops and special meetings, and we are recessed. For 5:01.
Doug, do you need this?
All right, bring this meeting back into session from our recess. 5:01, PUD 23-02.
Yes, ma'am. For your consideration, at the conclusion of this hearing, you're going to be asked to consider an ordinance of Citrus County, Florida, political subdivision of the state of Florida, many in Citrus County, Land Development Code Atlas, and an existing master plan for non-residential uses, PUD 22-01, by allowing mini warehouse use and combining two out parcels, providing for applicability, providing for modifications that may arise from consideration of public hearing, providing for severability, providing for codification and scribbling reserves, and providing for an effective date, and I believe that the applicant is here in the audience.
Excellent. Do you like to come to the mic?
Representing the applicant tonight. We, we would like to, to request a continuance tonight. We just need a little bit more time to gather more information and work on our presentation, so we'd like to request a continuance.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to allow the applicant to have a continuance.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Schlebaugh, a second by Commissioner Bays. Is there any public comment?
My name is Shanene Moss, I live at 2893 North Osprey Cove Point, La Canto, Florida. And I came to speak to you in regards to this issue, this is a carryover from, I believe last June was the first time that I came and spoke to you about this issue. I think that within La Canto, specifically, we should encourage smart, sensible development with a community-backed vision for Citrus County, whether it be we want to grow up to look like the nightmares of Ocala, Newport-Ritchie, Tampa, or we want much more controlled growth with a community focus and community spaces. I ask again for you all to deny this request, I also would like for you to deny the continuance and just deny it altogether outright, if you could do that. It's unfair to the citizens of this county to keep up with every modification request for the PUD to tell these, and it's time to tell these developers and all developers to get it right, and under no extreme circumstances, unless you have something like infrastructure issues, would you change the PUD once it's approved. Also let them know that just because, and I quote and I quote one of you all, "The devil that you do know, that they're the devil that you do know, that you won't be swayed by baby and bathwater requests." The baby being Texas Roadhouse and the bathwater being a multi-level storage building. These two things should be completely separate requests. Throw out the baby with the bathwater and let this devil be its own advocate, not you. What else did you really envision going there? Was it really a storage building? Now with Tampa General moving into the area, the possibility of an advanced care facility is an option. What is your vision for Citrus County? High-paying medical careers and businesses, or more minimum wage businesses with just a few employees and basically just jobs? The developer had asked at one point in time, what else can go on that lot? How about something indoors for kids, youth, and older people, like a family entertainment fund center with virtual reality experiences, arcades, video games, photo booths, indoor playgrounds or softball, laser tag, trampoline parks, you get the gist, et cetera. How about a true nightclub, a video parlor, a comedy club, karaoke lounge, or dance club, et cetera. How about a health food stores like Sprouts, World Market, Trader Joe's, et cetera, a sporting goods store like Academy of Sports? I mean, after all, we're the nature's coast. We can't go get sporting goods anywhere. Do you want Citrus County to be another Tampa, Newport Richey, or Ocala? Or make it more like villages with numerous opportunities for quality health care, like the Brownwood Advanced Care, like the advanced care facility in Brownwood. Workforce development funds could be used to bring in training for these medical careers. Think about what happens when you create a career, when children in your youth of this county have a career. They stay here.
Thank you.
Good job. Along with their grandchildren and your grandchildren.
Well said. Okay, apparently you are the only open to the public this evening. So any comments by the board? Board discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes?
Sure, I'll comment. Was not expecting for the continuance today, but when the application came, the first time, I was not for the storage unit. And, you know, you won me over. Sure, I'll vote to deny it if this motion fails to continue it. So I'll be ready to make that motion.
Commissioner Schlebaugh, Commissioner Bays, anything?
There's a motion on the floor.
But we're discussing it.
I don't have anything to say. I'm not a fan of, I haven't made my decision. I'm not a fan, but I would like to hear the case and then make my decision. And if they've asked for a continuance, we can't very well vote to deny it because we haven't heard the case.
Commissioner Bays, anything?
I would agree. I think we are, I know I am. I'm looking for the highest and best use of any of the developments that we can bring to this county. That whole corridor seems to be overlaid with a lot of minimum wage jobs, a bunch of retail. So I'm looking for something that is an added value to our community. And I think the lady is, she said it very well. So we'll see what they come back with.
Okay. I agree with both of them. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 3-1. And we are adjourned.